Actually, use the app already. Okay. All right. Let's call the regular city council meeting order from the city of Galena, Illinois, Monday, July 25th, 2025. Call Mary Beth.
Gates?
Here.
Johnson?
Keifer?
Here.
Teigmeyer?
Here.
Westmeyer?
Here.
Here.
Runner.
Here. We have a call next is a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Okay, then let's move ahead to item 25C dash 0288, reports of standing committees. Nothing tonight, okay? Let's move ahead to item number 25C dash 0289, citizens' comments. Not to exceed 15 minutes as an agenda item and not more than three minutes per speaker. If you wish to address the council, just step up to the podium, state your name and your address. Okay, then let's just move ahead then, thank you. Let's move ahead to the consent agenda CA 25 dash 14. Do I have any type of emotion on that?
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda CA 25 dash 14.
Second. All right, it's been moved to second on the consent agenda CA 25 dash 14. Any comments on any of them? Take roll, call Mary Beth.
Yes.
Keifer?
Yes.
Westmeyer?
Yes.
Kanan?
Yes.
Gates?
Yes.
Runner.
Yes, go to carries. Let's move ahead then to the unfinished business under item number 25C dash 0294, discussion and possible action on renewal of the depot building lease with a greater delay of marketing incorporated. Do I have some type of emotion on that? Or person Katie, what do you think?
I make a motion to renew the lease of the depot building lease with the GGMI marketing for whatever the building would be appraised for, for taxes plus $5,000. Item number 25C dash 0294.
Okay, is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved to second on the amount discussion.
So just to make it clear, it's the, the amount would be 5,000 plus whatever the tax amount would be, not?
Correct.
So if the tax amount is 2,000 or 3,000 or whatever, it'd be the five plus that.
Yeah.
So the city would end up with a net five.
Yeah, plus taxes going back. I just think that leasing the building for a dollar when they have funds coming in, they have excess funds of $300,000, they have revenues versus some of the other, like we talked about last time, versus some of the other people who are leasing buildings from us and that there is an opportunity to recapture some funds there.
Or person Jerry?
Yeah, we're gonna have to table it till we find out, find out what the building's appraised at and what the taxes are gonna be.
Well, it was tabled last time to find out that information, but we still haven't got the exact amount of what that building would be assessed for because these, the assessor, the assessor has not assessed it yet, right?
That's correct. We looked to kind of get an estimate of what we thought the range might be, trying to get a feel on that, but we would have to have the assessor come down and assess the building if it goes back. It will go back on the tax. I, that was the first question is if we charge rent of the $5,000, it will be subject to real estate taxes after that. Question is how much? And our best estimate was somewhere between about $8,500 a year, which is, I believe, what the building that was the former drive-through on Main Street pays a year. We looked at that just as a quick comparable and then we looked at Illinois Bank and Trust Building down at the bottom of gear, which is a comparable size with comparable parking. And if our information was correct, theirs is about $45,000 a year. So we're looking at a pretty wide gap in there as to what that building would be appraised at. So we don't know, or be assessed at. So we don't know that number.
Or person Dick.
I think we're missing the, the point here because yes, I think it would be great if they paid something for rent, but it opens up a huge can of worms because don't we rent like to the history museum for a dollar?
Just one, I don't mean to cut you off, so like, did we get a second to Katie's motion?
Yeah.
Okay, we, okay, I'm sorry, I missed, I just wanna make sure it's okay.
Um, yeah, and so I think that we're, we're, we're missing it for an amount of money that doesn't, doesn't mean a lot and maybe we could get that money in a, in a different way because like I, I believe Roger, you mentioned, correct me if I'm wrong, but last meeting, that what happens if this goes back to a train depot, right? And we need it for an actual train depot, if we ever get a train coming through town, right? Then that building is up for this really weird amount of $5,000 plus taxes, rent, and that's like what it's set as, you know? And then we've done that with other buildings around here and I don't, I just think it's, it's not, I think it's tricky. So maybe it would be something to agree to now, to do it the way we've done it and then look into the further ramifications for next year at this time, or see how maybe we can get a donation back in what we think would be fair so that we're gaining some of those funds, but not opening up this can of worms.
Anybody else here? Jerry?
I kind of agree with Cindy on this. To get the money back, they, they pay us 8% now. Raise that to 10%, give them the lease for a dollar to keep, because we're not renters. We don't want to get into renting places. And like you said, we will open a can of worms. Hopefully the museum, when they move out, we sell the building and don't worry about leasing it for a dollar or whatever. But I think this year we should evaluate it and then the 10% would be more logical in my opinion.
My question would be, Joe, we have a current lease with the bill, or not a lease, but an agreement at 8% and that's for a number of years yet, correct? So we can't just arbitrarily raise that.
For five and a half years and ten years.
Cindy.
Sorry.
Right, it would have to be part of the agreement with that. And that's offset on administrative fees and stuff and collecting the taxes and things that's involved.
So that would be a little harder.
So we, to just do that tonight would not be.
Yeah, I, I tend to agree with Cindy and Jerry and Roger and them. The building is ours. It's gonna be ours as far as I'm concerned forever. It's being used. It was closed for a while. People, council members at the time said, well, where do they go to the bathroom over there? Good question, but anyway, once we found a renter to get in there and they fix in, they stuck about 20 grand in it to fix up the rooms and whatnot to begin with. They pay us 8% off of the hotel motel tax. I think it would be to our best interest to leave a good renter in there at a dollar a year, keep it off the tax rolls and go ahead with the, the 5,000 for maintenance for this upcoming contract.
I'm sorry, 5,000 for what, Jerry?
For maintenance, for maintenance.
So you're saying, I'm sorry.
Oh, go ahead.
You're saying ask for 5,000, but it's not as rent, but you're saying ask in the same agreement for 5,000 towards maintenance that they're not giving us already or?
Well, it was always said at 2,000.
It was a maintenance cap, so it's 2,000 per occurrence and they agreed to raise it to 5,000 per occurrence. So it's like our US water contract, for example, with O and M. If they have things up to $3,000, they cover it. And if it exceeds that, then the city covers that expense. So that's what is in this lease agreement that's proposed.
Also with the museum where we got the 5,000.
That's, yeah. It was two.
Maintenance. Yeah, it was two with the five as presented in this contract. What, Jerry?
How long is the contract for? Five years?
It's for 2030 till 2030.
Why can't we cut back on that contract and look at it?
Well, you.
Say two years or?
Well, you can always go back on a contract, really.
Well, yeah, a contract.
But that's up to you, you know, if you want to. But anyway, right now on this motion and a second, any other discussion on this motion? Take roll on that motion.
Keifer?
Yes.
Teigmeyer?
No.
Westmeyer?
No.
Lena?
Yes.
Gates?
No.
Runner?
No. All right, do I have a different motion?
Well, without, without breaking the contract or renegotiating contractors, not much we can do, I don't think, unless the, the Gleana Country Tourism.
Well, I need, I need a new motion now because this one died. Now, if you want to make a new motion in regards to keeping things as is or whatever, then you do it or else, you know, I need some type of motion before we get into discussion. Or person Jerry?
I'll make a motion to keep it the way it is and then we'll have a year or two look into things and see what happens.
All right, so then now I need a second for that. Second.
Is it, is it changing it to one year instead of a five-year lease based on your motion?
It's a one year, $1 a year and?
For the total duration up to 20th, as is in the contract that was in your agenda, I didn't say.
I'll second that.
You'll second that, all right.
Mayor?
Yes.
I think you should clarify that in this motion.
Who made it or how?
How you made it, it should clarify that it's one year.
I'll just make a motion that keep it the same for, for next year for a dollar.
For the duration of the contract?
Contract, yeah.
All right. Any other second that, Cindy?
Yes, we need the item number in the whole thing.
You can. But if you want to put in that item number, it changed, Jerry?
25C dash 0295.
Right.
Or I mean, 94.
Okay, with that new motion, and I think we talked that, discussed it, discussed it on the previous motion. Is there anything else? Take a vote on that.
Teigmeyer?
Yes.
Westmeyer?
Yes.
Lena?
No.
Gates?
Yes.
Keifer?
No.
Runner?
Yes. All right, motion carries. All right, let's move ahead then for new business. Under item number 25C dash 0295, it's a quarterly report fiscal year 26 budget, fiscal year 26 marketing plan, fiscal year 25 annual report by the Galena Country Tourism. I think Jerry Matheson, Jerry, yep, he's here. And he has a handout that I think everybody's got and he also has a projector.
Hello, good evening. Hello, Mr. Mayor, council members, city staff. Pleasure to be in front of you this evening, beautiful day, albeit a little on the warmish First of all, I want to, I want to thank our board and our team for everything that they're doing. I'm fortunate that I get to stand in front of you and, and give the, the reports with so much positive information. Before we jump into that report, I just did want to, and, and thank you on the lease. You're a wonderful landlord and I believe we're very good tenants as well, so it's good for, good for Galena and, and good for visitors. There was just a couple of points of clarification on behalf of, of our board that were in the minutes of the previous discussion where you were talking about rent. And just wanted to mention that it was mentioned that wages increased by 15%, which is accurate. However, that makes up now 21% of the budget, not 29, 22%. And, and I'll explain more as we, we go into this.
All right, we're ready.
You're ready for the report?
Yes.
You don't want to talk about the other thing? Okay. It was, if I could just make one statement, 29% is above, is, is better than the best industry benchmark. Commonly it's over 50%. So just wanted to say that's something we're very, very proud to be at 29%. Anything below a third is looked at as, as a gold standard. So just wanted to make that point in its, in its context. To look at the FY25 annual report is the first thing we're going to talk about in the run of show. I'm just gonna skip into some of these highlights with, with total interactions. I believe it's on page three, 74.5 million, the earned media views of 20 million. We've got a lot of information to cover here in 10 minutes, so I, I want to go through this very, very quickly, but let's just skip to page four if we can, insights and performance, where we talk about, starting out with Google search of, of 29 million impressions, the Google search clicks of, of half a million. In that blue box on the bottom, just to highlight so many of these metrics, which were not only record-breaking and better than the previous year, but just blew everything out of the water, literally FY25 total marketing interactions at 74 million, visitor center walk-ins, we're talking about the depot. Since we've been in that building in the last seven or eight years, that's a record number of walk-ins. The book direct searches, you can see there's a healthy increase, earned media views at 20 million. FY24, it was 1 million. Those are amazing stats. Bolt guide mailings, you can see almost twice as many visitor guides went out. YouTube views going from 19,000 to over one and a half million. Those are some very impressive statistics. Moving on to page five, visitation snapshots. We did provide a link in your materials to go to report, a new report that's never been done before, on our website that talks about a visitor snapshot, visitor profiles, things like the top origin markets. From, from Chicago number one down to Minneapolis number 10. Again, too much information to dwell on it too much, but you can see the visitors we target and where they come from. Website in, website insights, taking a look at where the visitors go on our website. Events, the most visited page, the top 10 blogs. We've done a fabulous job more recently than ever with some of these blogs that are very rich in content and tell a story for the visitors. On page six, it's rapidly moving into milestones and momentum marked, we marked FY25 with impactful growth, strategic planning and a record-setting performance. From the launch of new visitor, visitor digital tools like Skynet and visitor information to robust advertising campaigns, new campaigns, expanded content creation, and amazingly, we did 75 photo video shoots adding to our content. Last time we were here, we talked about the 2024 impact report. We have more copies of that if you'd like, that's also on our website. We've got Viking cruises backed in Galena, more than 1,000 people gearing up for the bicentennial, the filming of Death of a Brewer, continued the upward trend in lodging tax revenue. We did two RFPs for new agencies, one exclusive to our visitor guys, the other a new advertising agency, which is extremely good. And prior to my arrival, there was a contract with a previous agency and they were very good, but we renegotiated and, and saved over $200,000 in, in agency fees annually. That money will go back into media, back into promoting Galena and is very, very strategic and a good benchmark. We rolled out Skynet, we have Visit Widget coming up. We've sponsored nine different events in the community, which is giving back to the community. We launched a new QR code this week in Galena country. It's pretty new, but it's already received over 8,000 scans and we welcomed 20 group tours. So that's, that's a lot. But I just also wanted to take a, re-sip of water and talk about the next page where there was a story last week in the Washington Post, also ran in the Minnesota Star Tribune, the Minneapolis newspaper, which gives the lay of the land. And this isn't necessarily new information or any sort of secret information to divulge, but Americans are downsizing or foregoing their summer vacations. So the fact that we've been able to maintain and, and increase the momentum that Galena country developed during the pandemic, we did not normalize, which most destinations did, and go back to 2019 where we're 10% above that, we've maintained that momentum, all in an American landscape where there's still, we've talked about this before, very much a sense of, of uncertainty. As we look at the headline on the next page, economic uncertainty curtailing Americans' vacation travel. The rest of the United States isn't back to 2019 levels and, and there's some pockets here and there, but in terms of revenues, in terms of occupancy, we should not only celebrate these successes, but we should recognize that we don't operate in a vacuum. We are part of this other landscape and to maintain that success and grow upon it is really something that as, as members of the community, we should be very, very grateful for, that we can attract those types of visitors. Second report, and if there's questions on any of this or you want me to go in more detail, now or later happy to do that. The second report is the Q4 FY25 report where we break down a lot of these metrics in terms of a quarterly snapshot. And we've been doing that in quarters one through three already. A lot of this information is compiled and aggregated in that first report, but just wanted to break it down quarterly. We've talked about before that impact report is the first time we've done a report to measure the calendar year, January through December. These quarterly and annual reports internally recognize our fiscal year, which is July 1 through June 30th. So just wanted to point that out. The next document, third document, we'll fly right ahead to the FY26 budget, which was approved by our, our board of directors at its last meeting. We'll have another full board meeting tomorrow. We're looking at lodging tax, just, this is a two-page document, 30,000-foot view. We're being very conservative on lodging tax, tax growth, estimating a 1.5% increase. We're pacing, in the city of Galena, we had a great January, the spring, the value season, February, March, April, we're off, but we had a good May, we're up as strong as June and future bookings look really good. So total income up 1.44% in our budget and $2,868,000. You can look at total marketing is up about 10%, 9.49, with the biggest increase there, content creation. We're making a sizable investment in, in photos and videos. Up a little bit in, in travel and the business expenses, trying to get to more trade shows, events, we're promoting the destination. Our total office expenses up about 10%. This kind of routine business, we look on page two, just wrapping it up, is of course, it's a, it's a balanced budget going into the year with a 1.44% increase in net operating income as well to match the expenses. The next document is usually what everybody is most interested in, and that is the Galena Country Tourism Marketing Plan. I should add that in an effort to continue to increase our transparency, engage and collaborate with the community, this was just emailed this morning to all of our stakeholders. It exemplifies that transparency. It's the FY26, starting July 1 through June 30th of, of 2026 marketing plan. We talk about target markets, our objectives, the marketing spends and, and what's new. Flipping over to the next page, meet our audience. We're going back to that, that research. The first time we've had those kind of research reports like that, recognizing our audience. Our objective is to attract visitors in the markets who are most likely to visit. That's where the highest ROI is. The primary location is the Chicago area. The good news is it's three hours away. Maybe the not-so-good news is it's not 20 minutes away. So we still need to be in front of those consumers. Secondary locations range from Milwaukee, St. Louis, the Twin Cities, down to Sioux City, Iowa. And there's also some tertiary locations. We talk about our personas, just laying down the landscape here, leisure travelers, romantic couples, history buffs. Obviously midweek is a, is a priority for us and those, those value seasons with value-based travelers. And that's really what people are looking for today, a way to extend their dollar. There's uncertainty, there's inflation, everybody's experienced that. So we know we've got the numbers here, the people are here. Are they spending as much per capita? Probably not, but it's our job to get them here and I'm happy to report that they are Campaign objectives, to increase the overall marketing impact, expand our reach and influence, especially in new markets across Route 20 in Iowa, Des Moines and St. Louis. We know we're a different product for the most part that exists in, in Iowa. We want to leverage those personas and increase midweek and value season visitation and diversify our marketing channels. Add in streaming along with new print and digital platforms to reach target audiences and increase our local marketing presences as well with the day trippers and getting people to come downtown. What are the strategies in the plan? You'll see on the next page that it's, it continues to be primarily digital. SEO is important, search engine optimization, SEM, search engine marketing with the new agency, Madden Media. We did a lodging co-op for the first time where we picked up 70% of, of the partnership and it gives us the ability and more importantly, it gives lodging properties the opportunity to market themselves and we pay 70% of that freight. As the official destination marketing organization, most of the work we do centers on getting people to the destination rather than specific properties. So it's the swing and deal of the century for hotels. We're on Meta, Pinterest, Google, YouTube, TikTok, AAA on the go, lots of things down this list. You can see the digital media spend, that's the spend alone at 662,000. The agency fees and platforms at 191,000, that's about $200,000 less than we invested in the previous year. And that goes back to again why that, that 15% strategically was increased in staffing because we've taken a lot of those responsibilities of those, that expertise as professional destination marketers in-house. And we believe that's a good strategy, it's a better value and it saves you money on administrative costs. It's going, it's more money going into marketing. The omnichannel marketing plan, print advertising, a lot of the print too comes with a digital component, but research, especially since the pandemic, has really seen an explosion in the, in the popularity of, of print once again. Again, we're mostly digital, but people, research shows that people are more trusting of, of print advertising and they also have a strong appetite for it. So it's a, it's a small but mighty portion of our marketing spend as well. The next page, design and creativity of the official visitors guide. We have a brand new partner there, Haley Sue, working with the same printer as we did last year. We've already begun work on this. Storytelling and enhancing our brand with a theme pretty much based on contemporary Americana, which I think blends well with, with our values and how we perceive Galena country and how our visitors perceive it as well. So design and creative platforms for that project, 160, for 176,300. The next page, we set aside a certain amount of money every year for opportunities. We've reserved some for previous commitments for communities like Warren as in Elizabeth to enhance traffic throughout the county, not to stint in Galena. Video and photography, a little bit more there on the next page with who we're working with, people like Troy Walsh, Matt Haas. We have a brand new partner locally in event and, and video, video department with 1826 Creative, also doing considerable work with Amy May Photography. So you can see that investment. We'll be working on our website as well. I'm sorry, I'm rushing through this quick, but there's still lots more to talk about. Website, you know, takes a, a constant effort. We have very capable people on staff that are engaged with our partners there. Skynet, that's that, that new tool to get people moving around the country, along with Visit Widget. We've got the GoDaddy, GoDaddy hosting along with constant contact. So you can see. So you can see the type of investment that's required there to do business. It's not only the official DMO, but also the one certified by the state of Illinois, which is a big part of our budget with somewhere between $200,000 and $300,000 of grants. It's quite a process to be able to be designated as that entity. We put it all in a pie chart on the next page. You can see where that investment goes. For the most part, it is digital. Opportunistic is in there, print, design, and the photo video. So what's new on the next page? Target markets, some of the placements and tactics. See some new things in there, especially with the bicentennial coming out, more with the Gazette and the Galenian. Roadrunner Magazine is motorcycle focused. We see some real opportunities there, doing some new mini mags, particularly with historic walking tour and some gamification trails throughout Joe Davies County. New vendors, Haley Sue, gigantic design, Amy May Photography, and 1826 Creative. We think there's real opportunities in the market of the car motorcycle enthusiasts along with group travels, group travelers, new engaged couples, and the value-based traveler. So that's the marketing plan. I know I really burdened Matt with probably too many handouts and collateral material that it took a while to get it all through because it was too much for email. I think it was too much for re-transfer there for a while, but we got it in there. On the next one, we got some numbers. I don't want to drag you down in some of these numbers, but we do things on our fiscal year combining city and county revenues. And this is through May, almost to the end of our fiscal year, 2025. You can see Galena, the tax receipts are in 3.18%, which we're very, very fortunate. I mean, I'm here to say that we're good at what we do, but we're also very lucky being in Galena that we're able to continue this momentum. Joe Davies County, a lesser amount, but footnotes that we talked about before. There's one major property that's been very much in arrears in paying the lodging tax. Also had a couple of properties there that had some significant hiatus in 2025 as well. So the next three documents, I'm hoping you're studying them and seeing them. The city of Galena lodging reports in terms of our remittances, in terms of the tax comparisons, and also some of the room rate RevPAR and occupancy data. The last two things that we referenced were the impact report. I know we've got extra copies here if you'd like them. I think we handed that out and went through it at the last meeting. That is also available in full transparency on our website for all the world to see along with this document, which is, I don't know, it's about 40, 50 pages long, fully available online, which has the visitor snapshot of all of our visitor recovers. That's never been done before. So we're excited about it. We're having a good summer. The weather's warm and people are in town. So that's kind of it. I'm here to answer questions. We have a couple of board members with us.
Questions for Colin Sanderson and Christine.
Terry or any of the board members?
Thank you.
Cindy, Cindy, do you have something?
Yeah, I was just curious, what, if anything, do you do like with smaller events that we have, like the five-page stair challenge besides like listening to it or the half marathon or sort of things that you do here in Galena or even like the Harvest Fest coming up in August in Elizabeth? Like, is there a way that you're a part of those smaller things that are really, you know, struggling to get people to them and are valuable?
Yeah, we've got cash sponsorships. We promote them all. I mean, the best and biggest thing we can do is be a resource for getting the word out and aggressively promote those events through our platform. But we've also been cash sponsorships last year of nine of those different events. We're right now working on the Joe Davies County Fair with the sponsorship. And I know Tom and Fallon are here that have a lot more insight of what events and at what levels. We're also developing for the first time ever a grant program to better quantify our support of those events and those investments over time. So yes, we are engaged. We've also produced the Live at the Plaza event, which is something that, it isn't a big investment. I mean, the cost is, you know, one night is less than a dinner for four, but the idea was to stimulate some traffic on this end of town. It's a great place to do it. So, you know, and the future of all of those events are always very fluid. So, long story short, there's lots to talk about there. That's another hour-long conference.
All right.
Any other questions? It's time for Terry or anybody else. Oh, first Katie?
I think it'd be helpful on the P&Os to break out the maintenance versus like landscaping, snow, that kind of thing versus like maintenance for actual building versus what's like contracted. So that when we look at a lease, we can better understand that maintenance figure. And then also on the pie chart, it's like 843,000, but it would be helpful to know, or 854, I'm sorry, digital fees and platforms, like what percentage of that is fee? So like subscriptions to a party versus the actual ad spend. I mean, it doesn't have to be today, I'm just saying going forward, the next quarterly report would be helpful.
Yeah, I'd be happy to answer those questions. Councilmember Weenan, we knew before, well, before the last meeting, immediately prior to the meeting, you had contacted our office about a detailed rundown of those $30,000 to $40,000 of maintenance expenses. I know we sent and it was received about a five-page ledger of all of those expenses detailed. We can certainly go through that and do that again. I don't own a two-page document. We want to put in five pages in this presentation just for those maintenance expenses. But we spend $30,000 to $40,000 a year, all-inclusive, that's line item there for the building. I think we also want to clarify that it was way before my time, but Galena Country Tourism invested $170,000 into that business or into that building in recent improvements. As far as the pie chart, we can break that down more. I think if we did a deep dive just in that document, it would break down subscriptions and some of those fees. And the one item that's in there, I think it was close to $700,000 of just pure media as I go back.
I just, just a clarifying question, that it would be like lawn care, snow removal, that it would be on your actual P&O, that it would read, it would be expanded just a little bit more, is what I was asking for.
I will definitely make that a topic at our finance committee meeting tomorrow.
Okay, thank you.
And I, mine is more of a comment, I guess, than a question, but I know you're doing a great job with leisure tourism, but thanks, fantastic. Still, I don't know how to do it. You guys are the experts. I would still like to see some emphasis, and maybe you're already doing it, but a heavier emphasis maybe on small conference, bringing more people here Monday through Thursday. I still would like to see that emphasis on that. I still think we have a lot to offer, many of these small conferences that are going maybe other places.
Good question, Mr. Gates. I think we should sit down and talk more. In addition to my decades of experience in leisure travel marketing, very familiar with the meetings and convention market from other destinations that I've led, including being the CEO of 250,000 square foot convention center. So I'm very familiar with how that works, what it takes. And part of the, well, really the biggest challenge for Galena is the product itself. There's really two places that would cater to that. Meetings and conventions are sold in a completely different way than leisure travel, which is a lot of digital. It's a lot of storytelling. Meetings and conventions are all about building relationships, one-on-one with salespeople. No one's ever booked a convention by having an ad in a magazine or online. It definitely reinforces a strong sales effort, which keeps people on the ground. I know we have our board chair here, Colin Sanderson, his facility along with Chestnut Mountain are in that game. If we were to have salespeople working the streets, if you will, on that, it would primarily just benefit those two facilities. There are ways to develop the product, which include sizable investments. I can tell you that there is in the convention center or conference center in the country that makes money. That's aside from huge initial investments, which usually require implementation of additional lodging taxes or tourism improvement districts. There are millions of dollars in facilities, and then it's also to maintain those. So part of it is the product. You leapfrog from that, you really have to question it because the other part of the equation is the dates and when and how and who controls the dates. And a lot of the property owners that are in the convention business, they're going to want to control those dates so they can trade it behind, for what's behind door number two. It would be different if there was a city-owned conference or convention center, for example, but that's a whole other discussion and a whole other day.
It's really small what we have compared to if you're doing a big conference.
Yeah, but I'm not really talking about big conventions. I'm talking small regional conferences of anywhere from 50 to 100.
Any other questions to say? Thank you, Terry.
Thank you.
Okay, then let's move ahead on to item number 25C dash 0296. Discussion and possible action to apply for an Illinois DCEO site readiness program to attract new industries and create jobs in the scenic metals area. Do you have some type of motion? Oh, first Terry.
I'll make a motion to approve to apply for Illinois DCEO site readiness program to attract new industries and create jobs in the scenic metals area. 25C dash 0296.
Okay, then moving second, item number 25C dash 0296, discussion.
Hopefully you get a grant.
Get it and get moving ahead a little bit, yeah. It definitely helps us. You know, we've got to kind of diversify away from just tourism. So, and also for jobs for people. All right, any other questions, discussion? All right, take a little bit.
Yes.
Weenan?
Yes.
Gates?
Yes.
Kiefer?
Yes.
Westmeyer?
Yes.
Yes, most curious. Let's move ahead to item number 25C dash 0297, U.S. Water Monthly Water and Sewer Operations and Maintenance Report. Andrew, Andrew.
He's absent.
I think he's absent. All right.
So I'm giving blood though. So I'm giving blood and he might not be here.
He never ate his cookies after he did that.
I could cover briefly if you want.
If you want to.
I mean, you can see what his report said. It's usually what we do every month of what we pump and produce for water, what we treated at the treatment plant, the big step up. We're starting to see some results in the water accountability. So we have like 78% accounted for revenue water, 1% on top of that, that's non-revenue water. So we're approaching that mid-80s where we want to be for industry standard. So replacing meters, especially the large user meters, trying to identify any leaks or things like that, and continued maintenance is starting to work better as well as we're making sure that our meter reading is corresponding with what we're producing on his report. So we're hoping to keep that going. And we also had no water main breaks.
Hopefully in Jinxess.
Hopefully our investments are paying out there too.
When does their fiscal year end? I think I asked Andrew, is that this month?
The end of July. Yeah, like in a couple of days.
Okay, so I was looking at, we're getting pretty close on this.
So we, it looks like, you know, the cap expenses will be getting some money back.
Yeah. Thank you, Matt. Okay, then let's move, we had the item number 25C dash 0298. Discussion and possible action to reorganize city staff for enhancing sustainability management.
Make a motion. Make a motion to table the discussion possible action to reorganize city staff for enhanced sustainability management, item number 25C dash 0298.
Second.
All right, move second, table that item number until when?
I just would like a little bit more information. I'd say the next meeting should be fine.
Next meeting. Okay, it's a new business and it was tabled to the next meeting. I have a second, so no holds needed. So then moving ahead, item 25C dash 0299, discussion and possible action for city staff appointment and salary adjustment. Oh, first Katie?
Make a motion to table discussion and possible action for city staff appointments and salary adjustments, item number 25C dash 0299, and I would say by the next meeting as well.
Second.
Second, okay. And we have to give probably a little direction here. We want to, it broke down more, you want?
Yeah, I'm happy to answer that. I think the job descriptions for what they currently have of what duties they would be removing from that job description, what would be adding to that job description. I'd like to see the percent, this is just me personally, I would like to see the percentages a little bit more in line. And probably just like a little bit more clarification.
Like functional tasks, things like that?
Yeah, yeah.
Are you, are you looking for, do you mean what's changing from what, because we're talking about the same people, like what's changing from what they're doing now to what they would be doing in this new organization? That's what you're wanting?
Sure, so perhaps a wage study. I thought that some of the percentages could be studied a little bit to see what's in the area of what that job is paying. I think some of the percentages were a little high, relatively speaking.
Based on the individual or based on?
The area.
I mean, it's hard because like the description wasn't, I think, like what is being removed, what is being added? And then I always like, don't like to talk about the individual person, but like the roles and responsibilities, because everybody's replaceable. So like what is, what would that?
Yeah, I could break down the functional tasks.
What is that role and compass and like, and what is a comp set for communities of our size and what does that pay for that role? And then skills and certifications, like is that something different? Like, how are those compensated? I think just a flat number across the board may not be appropriate.
All right, both of them are tabled until next meeting. All right.
I want to say one more thing, just because if you're doing the, if you're doing the numbers, there was an 80-some thousand dollars increase. Was that between the three or the five?
It was 64,000 across five people.
Okay, so it was for all five, okay. Thank you.
All right, let's move ahead to item 25C dash 0300, the warrants. Do I have a motion on the warrants? Oh, first Terry.
Mr. Mayor, among the warrants, be paid, item 25C 0300.
All right, do I have a second on the warrants?
Second.
All right, moving second on item number 25C dash 0300, warrants. Any questions on any of the bills? Oh, first Cindy.
I just wanted to say, we are again at an over 7K mark on the Clark City legal fee, So I believe we're moving above what we budgeted for that for the year. So I just want to keep my eye on it and looking forward to an update and resolve.
Okay, any other things on the warrant? All right, take a little bit.
Kiefer?
Yes.
Westmeyer?
Yes.
Westmeyer?
Yes.
Weenan?
Yes.
Gates?
Yes.
Runner?
Yeah, most curious. Let's go ahead with 25C dash 0301. Oh, first comments, oh, first Katie.
One thing I have is some of the grass, I think, is getting a little tall. I don't, I believe that Sam is responsible for that in some areas.
In the community?
Yeah.
For mowing enforcement.
Yeah. Sam.
He called me.
Okay, all right, anything else, Katie?
No, thank you.
Oh, first Jerry.
I don't have any tonight.
Oh, first.
Just so that the citizens know, the correct way to report is there's a neighbor or somebody that feel that their grass is too tall. Am I correct, it's called the non-emergency police somewhere? Is that the correct way to report?
Just call City Hall.
City Hall's fine.
1050, they'll put it on the list, get Sam, send him a letter, you know. Okay, is there anything else? Oh, first Jerry.
Uh, nothing tonight.
Okay, first Cindy.
Yes, so in response to the tall grass, I was just in Northfield, Minnesota. I came back today and I just want to say that they have lovely.
I came back there today and I just want to say that they have lovely, like yard after yard. It's a, it's a larger community, but yard after yard just has like lovely wildflowers and gardens. And if it's sort of, if it's, if it's controlled, I think, once again, I think maybe we're missing the thread like on the grass. Like there's a way to make it beautiful and not, you know, focus in on something small like the height of the person's grass. Like, I don't know, but that wasn't my, that was just a response. So I just want to say the blood drive, it seemed like it was a success and that was nice. And I was able to participate for the first time in the one that was held at City Hall on Thursday. And I saw some other city folks there. And then there's been some feedback that I've been receiving throughout the last two weeks regarding the, regarding the bust and the decision that was made with the general bus. And I'm not sure what we can do about it, but I just, I just want to make sure that, that it's mentioned that what was actually decided with the reducing the eight inches off of the, what was, it's already been created. Like those molds have been poured. He is a professional artist, so for us to make a decision on these pieces of artwork that have been in the making for 2000, is this sort of like our decision, in my understanding, is the location, but not the actual what the artwork is. Like that's already happened, right? So I would love, and I'm the only one that voted no, so I can't actually do this, but I would love for it to be revisited with input from the community because I, I just don't want to be here when they go up and then have an uproar when there's nothing to be done about it. I would love to involve them, involve the community before they're erected.
Anything else, Cindy?
Uh, September 13th, go to the Visit Galena site or go to Run Sign Up and type in Galena 5K Stair Challenge. We're trying to raise some funds for our local EMS and there's still time to train. And I will, I will contribute to you and I will raise you and we're going to raise money.
Good, thank you. All right, let's move ahead to item 25C dash 0302, city administrators report, Matt, anything?
The EV chargers, I keep saying they're going to start them soon. They had another, they had an issue with a utility conflict, which we have resolved now. They were planning to start tomorrow, hopefully. Hopefully we'll see some action on that soon. Since the last meeting, the storm damaged Green Street. The contractor repaired that as part of their warranty work. It blew out, just a little seal where the, where the manhole mastiff was at. So they repaired that under their warranty and then we repaired the brick, put the bricks back. Didn't take too much work, so that was much better than what happened last year. Crews will be working on damage from the storm we had this morning. So we'll make sure we get down the bike trail and get that opened up properly. They were working today hard on that. And lastly, there's a opportunity for funding for small businesses that we received information from Northwest Illinois Economic Development, the Small Business GAPS Development Fund. This is GAAP financing aid for small businesses. So I believe they're working on that with Illinois Bank and Trust. If you have information or want information on that in your small businesses, you can contact Northwest Economic Development and they can get you that information.
Okay, thanks. So we had 25C dash 0303, mayor's report. I have nothing to deny other than to say thank everybody for coming to the meeting and all our city staff for everything they do to clean up the town, the police, the handlers, the fire and our staff members, public works. With that, I entertain a motion for adjournment.
Someone?
It's been moving second to adjourn, take a little bit.
Keeper?
Yes.
Tadmeyer?
Yes.
Westmeyer?
Yes.
Weenan?
Yes.
Gates?
Yes.
Yes, most curious, we are adjourned. Thank you all.